Phoenixville Borough Council Meeting. Tonight, as we have for the duration of the pandemic, we are conducting our monthly Borough Council Meeting using the Zoom webinar platform to ensure the health and safety of public staff and council. While all the council, all the members of council and borough staff are here in person, members of the public are asked to join us via Zoom, the live stream or on our website or YouTube. We're glad you have joined us virtually for this meeting tonight. Participants attending from home may provide public comments during the public participation and public hearing portions of the agenda. During these portions of the agenda, please raise your hand and our staff will unmute your microphone, announce your name, and then you'll be able to speak. We will have two public comment periods tonight, one towards the beginning, one towards the end. Again, I thank you for joining us tonight, and we will now begin our monthly Borough Council Meeting. With that, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance in moment of silence.
(Pledge of Allegiance). To the states of America, and to the republic for which it stands, what a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Berkeley.
President.
Mr. Dalton.
Ms. Dugan.
Here.
Mr. Kirchner.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Soto.
Mr. Weiss.
Present.
Mr. Ewald.
Here.
Mayor Urschler.
Here.
Manager, assistants here virtual, Chief Police here, Solicitor, you have a call.
Thank you. With that, we have two items on tonight's agenda, or we have two items for minutes. The first item is just a notification that council did meet for executive session on October 6th, 2021, to discuss personnel matters. Second, are there, is there a motion approved last month's September 14th regular meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Any questions, corrections, or amendments to last month's regular meeting minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor? opposed? Thank you. Just as one note, Mr. Soto and Mr. Dalton did reach out, they were unable to join us tonight. With that, I'm going to make a motion that we recess into executive session. It is 7:02, and this is to discuss personnel matters.
Second.
You vote on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good evening, and we are back, we're back from executive session at 7:06.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to add a new item, 9C, conditional personnel offer to the agenda.
We have a motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Kirchner. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We've added a personnel offer on, so that's item 4C. Yep. Okay. With that, we will now move into, back to our regular agenda here with presentations. We leave our Chief of Police and our Mayor Urschler will have, we'll take it from here.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, all of those who are joining us here today in the chambers, as well as those of you who are joining us remotely via Zoom, we are very excited to announce that we have two new police officers who will join, be joining the Phoenixville Area Police Department. I would now like to turn over the podium to our Chief of Police, Chief Shostrom, who will do the introductions, followed immediately by each candidate's oath of office. Thank you.
All right, it's my pleasure to introduce the newest members of the Phoenixville Police Department, Michael Koppel and Nilda Jimenez. They accepted their offer of employment after doing exceptionally well throughout our rigorous hiring process that began in June. They both demonstrated that they are among the best of the best from the applicant pool. First, I'll call up Michael Koppel and his family. Officer Koppel was born in Levittown and was raised in Moton, Pennsylvania. He graduated from Governor Milfin, Milfin, Mifflin High School and is a nine-year veteran of the United States Marine Corps. Officer Koppel received a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Alvernia University. He graduated from the Redding Police Academy in 2014. Prior to joining the Phoenixville Police Department, Officer Koppel was employed as a police officer with the Pennsylvania State Capitol Police, and he recently joins us from the, from Callan Township Police Department. He comes highly recommended by both those agencies. He is joined here tonight by his wife Angela and their two sons, Miles and Grant, and Miles will be holding the Bible for his father.
Thank you very much, Chief, and welcome. Thank you for being here with us tonight. Please place your hand on the Bible and repeat after me. I.
Aye.
State your name.
Michael Koppel.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey.
Obey.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
United States of America.
The Constitution.
Constitution.
Of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
And the borough of Phoenixville.
And the borough of Phoenixville.
I will.
I will.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Discharge.
Discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As patrol officer.
As patrol officer.
With the borough of Phoenixville Police Department.
The borough of Phoenixville Police Department.
Chester County.
Chester County.
Pennsylvania.
Pennsylvania.
I will uphold.
I will uphold.
Obey.
Obey.
And enforce.
And enforce.
The law.
The law.
Without consideration of a person's.
Without consideration of a person's.
Race.
Race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap.
Handicap.
Or disability.
Or disability.
Congratulations, Officer Koppel.
Thank you.
Let me come up with her family. Officer Jimenez was born in Long Beach, California, and her family relocated to Mexico when she was very young. She moved to Yatma, Washington, where she was a, when she was a teenager, and she graduated from Toppin Gish High School. Officer Jimenez enlisted in the United States Army National Guard and has been active duty since 2012. She attended Philadelphia Community College, and she's a graduate of the Philadelphia Police Academy in 2017. Prior to joining the Phoenixville Police Department, Officer Jimenez was employed as a police officer with the Philadelphia Police Department for about five years, and she comes to us from the 25th District, highly recommended. Officer Jimenez is joined here tonight by her wife Isabel and her mother-in-law, Clara Horrigan. Isabel will be holding the Bible for her wife.
Please place your hand on the Bible and repeat after me. I.
Aye.
State your name.
Nilda Jimenez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey.
Obey.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
And the borough of Phoenixville.
And the borough of Phoenixville.
I will.
I will.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Discharge the duties of the office.
As patrol officer.
As patrol officer.
Within the borough of Phoenixville.
Within the borough of Phoenixville.
Police Department.
Police Department.
Chester County.
Chester County.
Pennsylvania.
Pennsylvania.
I will.
I will.
Uphold.
Uphold.
Obey.
Obey.
And enforce.
And enforce.
The law.
The law.
Without consideration of a person's.
Without consideration of a person's.
Race.
Race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap.
Handicap.
Or disability.
Or disability.
Congratulations, Officer.
Thank you.
And now I'd like to introduce our Police Chaplain, Reverend Daniel McDowell. He will be giving a brief benediction.
Please bow with me. Lord, we are grateful for these officers and their willingness to protect and serve this community during a time when police are under unprecedented scrutiny. We pray, Lord, that they will stand through this with integrity and strength, do their best to help this community to feel and remain safe and protected. Pray that you will watch over them and their families, and in every way bless them in those efforts. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend.
This will conclude the ceremonies. We can dismiss everybody that was here for that.
Thank you so much, Chief, and to all of the officers who are here today, to our new officers, as well as all of our friends from law enforcement who have joined us for tonight's celebration. Thank you very much for being here, and thank you for the incredible work that you do each day.
Stand by.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to offer a conditional appointment of Lieutenant Brian Marshall to the position of Chief of Police effective January 1st, 2020, subject to execution of employment agreement acceptable to the borough and completion of any required investigations or evaluations.
Second.
Motion on the floor made by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, six zero. Thank you for all coming out tonight. Okay, back to the agenda, our first round, this will go right into our first round of public participation. Members in the room or members joining us via Zoom, please feel free to raise your hand via the Zoom platform, and staff will call on you and then unmute you while we wait for any members of the public who are joining us on Zoom. We will start with anybody in the room that's wishing to address council for this round of public participation.
My name is David Lutzker. I'm speaking to you today as President of the Phoenixville Green Team and a member of RE-RE-RE Plastics is a group that is co-sponsored by the Phoenixville Green Team and Phoenixville Area Transition. RE-RE-RE Plastics stands for Reduce, Reuse, Recycle, and it's an ad hoc group of citizens that has empowered me to make the following introduction and proposal. I'd like to introduce you to a program called Sustainable Storefronts that I hope that Westchester Borough will adopt. It's a simple voluntary program wherein restaurants, bars, and cafes may choose three of five parameters to accept and would then be adopted into the program. Those five things are use recyclable paper bags for takeout, no plastic straws, biodegradable option by request, no styrofoam, no plastic takeout containers, and 100% reusable wares for onsite dining. Retail members can commit to both using recyclable paper bags and encouraging customers to bring their own bags. This program started in Westchester Borough. It's been in operation there for, not sure how long, but it's been pretty successful, I think about a year. Several other townships in the area have also begun to inquire about it and get on board. Three main goals I'd like to outline for this program, first of all, to reduce the toxins being introduced into French Creek, Schuylkill River with plastic litter that gets to our air, our water, our soil, and our food. To increase public awareness of the problem that plastics present to our health, identify leaders that want to play a role in reducing that, and to pave the way to further steps to improve sustainability, like banning the use of single-use plastic bags and transitioning to renewable energy. Those are things that the borough has both been involved in and we'll hear more about, I'm sure, in the future. I would suggest that it be sent to a committee, but I can't figure out what committee makes sense, so I will ask the council to adopt it as the borough without it going to a committee until at least such time that a, perhaps an environmental advisory commission or sustainability advisory commission is established. Thank you.
Any members of the public?
Mr. Ewald, I do have a hand raised. Ms. Duckdale, I've turned on your microphone.
Thank you. I'm Jane Duckdale, and I live at 229 Morgan Street here in Phoenixville. I'm a member of the Borough's Beautification Advisory Commission and a leader of Phoenixville Area Transition, a group that works to build local connections with each other and with nature. Since early in August, I've been enjoying the Hartwood Sunday evening gatherings for eco-poetry and creative arts, which met at Balder Park on Bridge Street until a few weeks ago. The day after the last Hartwood meeting in Balder Park, crews arrived at the park and cut down a number of trees to prepare the ground for a renovation of the park. These were big trees, and I understand that most of them, if not all, were quite healthy. Trees like these support amazing numbers of birds and pollinators, without which our community will be poor, not richer. The Balder Park renovation was made possible by generous grant from the Phoenixville family. The donation was accepted and the renovation was approved at Borough Council just last month. I'm very grateful to the donors for their generosity. Perhaps the borough felt some urgency to use the donation. However, the rapid way the events unfolded has been upsetting to a number of people, including me, and raises questions that I feel need to be addressed by Borough Council. The borough has a tree advisory commission, including a highly qualified arborist. The Tree Advisory Commission, or TAC, was not consulted or informed about cutting the trees in Balder Park. The TAC has a permit process for assessing trees that need to be cut, and I understand they generally only cut unhealthy trees. Needless to say, this protocol is not followed in Balder Park. Why not? What was the rush to cut down these trees without even telling the TAC? Recently, Dr. Bill Elmandorff from the TAC and State College, a respected author and tree expert, spoke here in Phoenixville about urban trees. His closing point was that municipalities need to build positive relations with residents in order to have successful tree programs. However, ignoring the Tree Advisory Commission to cut a number of big trees in the only park on Bridge Street is probably not the best way to build positive relations. The big question it raises is, why was the Tree Advisory Commission not consulted? TAC is a borough commission, but it can only do its mandated work of advising council if council makes it aware of plans to cut trees that are not on TAC's planned schedule. I would like to urge council to work more closely with its Tree Advisory Commission and commit to consulting with them before cutting any more trees. Thank you very much.
We have a few more hands. Mr. Kaliki, I've turned on your microphone.
Hi, thank you. My name is Chris Kaliki. I own a business on Church Street, and I'm a resident on Washington Avenue as well. Many of the local business owners and I have been discussing the street closures on Bridge Street, and the retail businesses feel as if our words are falling on deaf ears. We're really having a difficult time. Our, our patrons are having a hard time finding parking. They're not coming out as often as they would. We're not having the pedestrian traffic that we used to. We've had a lot of people turn away from visiting our businesses because the parking and traffic situation is so difficult. I know a lot of my federal business owners have reached out to their council persons to discuss this, and we'd like you to consider doing some kind of a modification to the street closures. Perhaps decrease how often it's done, consider opening up the 100 block of Bridge Street, just something to ease up on the traffic and parking difficulties that we're having. As a homeowner in Washington Avenue, we have a horrible time when, on the weekends, trying to park because all of the patrons who can't find parking elsewhere, especially if there's any permit parking, come over to Washington Avenue. The noise at night has really been frustrating to deal with. So I'd like to ask you to consider supporting the retail businesses and the residents who are struggling with the parking and traffic difficulties, and consider some sort of a modification. The other thing I wanted to comment on is the project on the corner of Church and Main, the 34 Main Street apartments. I noticed that the HARB had voted on some changes recently. I was looking through the borough's website, and I was not able to find any plans submitted there. So I, I was hoping I'd have a chance to review and ask any questions on it, but unfortunately, as, as much as I tried, I couldn't find the plans that were submitted. A question I did have on those, as I see it's on the agenda tonight, is I'd like to know how many ADA-compliant departments there are, and then again, I wasn't able to review them because I couldn't find them, so I'm sure I'll have more questions, but I wasn't able to, to get any details on that. Thank you.
Just to address the one comment, any, anything related to HARB is only on the exterior, so the plans that would be available for the HARB application would only pertain to the exterior of the building.
Mr. Kajak, I've turned on your mic.
Hello, my name is Mike Kajak. I'd like to welcome Officer Koppel and Officer Jimenez to the Phoenixville Police Force. Looking forward to meeting you one day and knowing that we have additional staffing protecting us and our well-being. Had a question regarding 34 South Main Street in regards to that their plans are being submitted or planning and zoning, or planning commission review on Thursday, kind of preliminary and ahead of schedule, that there'll be making modifications to their non-approved plans as their approved plans from a few months ago were recently turned over. So I'm just requesting that there be a little more review process in this HARB application and their future application that's coming up two days from now. Thank you.
Ms. Zapco, I've turned on your microphone.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. Um, so I just, two things I wanted to comment on. The first being that a few weeks ago, it happened Tuesday, September 21st, there was a chemical herbicide application downtown, including Bridge Street, by a landscaping service that the borough hires. This happened around 7:30 in the morning, which was confirmed at the last Parks and Rec meeting, and I just wanted to share again that I believe such chemical applications in busy downtown areas should be, should warrant the option that residents receive prior warning through a Phoenixville Borough Alert through email or text message. I just think as Phoenixville residents, we would deserve a heads-up and so that everyone can plan their morning activities accordingly, if they are walking their dog or going to get coffee, and they don't want to be around chemicals like that. And just wanted to encourage you again to explore this option for any. And just wanted to encourage you again to explore this option for any future applications. And I also had another thing I wanted to comment on. So the Baller Park project was a beautiful gift and there's a lot of good sentiment behind it. I just think that because it's done in a public park, the process should be followed to require that Tree Advisory Commission and the certified accredited arborists be involved when approving future projects that involve removal of trees, including not only Borough properties, but also trees that exist on properties for development. I just think a consistent process per project will help avoid ethical quandary and conflict of interest. And the process for tree removal should be transparent. The public should be given plenty of notice and access on the website to the plans in case they were to miss a meeting. Because I happened to miss a meeting and not hear about this through Parks and Recreation. By the time the next Borough Council meeting occurred, it was voted through. And I still haven't been able to access any plans for how many trees were actually removed. So just asking that you look into updating the Borough Code to develop a standard operating procedure for tree removal that involves TAC and the arborist. This will ensure a clean reputation for hired professionals performing the work for you for Borough Council and just help the residents be more privy to the facts. And I think it will increase civic engagement with the trees in a good way. So thank you.
Mr. Meadows, I've turned on your microphone. And that is the last person I have.
Good evening. It's actually Mrs. Meadows. We both signed in, but we're using one computer. I live at 615 Main Street in Phoenixville and I have a business at 113 Main Street. And I'm just calling to address the Bridge Street closures and the date that it's set to reopen. If I understand correctly from the website, it's November 29th, which is after Black Friday and Small Business Saturday. So given the loss of parking that that creates and the difficulty for people to get around and shop, those are the two biggest shopping days in retail for the whole year. So I would like to ask you to reconsider and open Bridge Street sooner than those days. Thank you.
Ms. Murphy, I've turned on your microphone.
Thank you so much. My name is Ginger Murphy. I live at 222 Church Street. First of all, I wanted to congratulate and welcome our new officers, Kupel and Jimenez. Very exciting. I'm especially excited to see a woman join the force, I must say. Additionally, I would like to just give input as a resident that on Thursdays through Sundays, when the downtown closures take place, it's been my observation that it is incredibly hard as a resident, even with the permit, to find parking. And it seems to me that I have not observed consistent parking enforcement. And I'm especially noticing this on Sundays when the permit in Zone A is enforced all day. And it really does make it difficult for residents. And I further wanted to add that I would really love to see, because our community has really struggled with parking, it's not going to get any better. I'd love to see, you know, an advisory committee to give council input and to have that committee be made up of stakeholders, including residents and business owners, council members, maybe a member of the Police Department. You know, those of us who are really integral to the downtown and affected by the lack of parking. I mean, I have friends who just don't even bother anymore, coming in on weekends, and it's just really sad. So I would also ask council to reconsider, you know, Bridge Street closures every single weekend. I do feel that it's a lot of pressure on the surrounding neighborhoods and I really have to question the benefit at this point, especially even this evening in comments. You know, having input from some of our businesses, business owners, saying that they're adversely affected by ongoing. And that loss of parking at the corner of Main and Bridge really does add to the problem. So thank you very much.
I don't have any other hands raised at this time.
This time we'll close this round of public participation. Just as a follow-up, we will refer the sustainable storefront issue to Mr. Weiss with his ITT committee. So I think Mr. Weiss will be in touch with you, Dave, and continue that conversation. With that, we'll move on to Part Six of our agenda, Communications and Council Participation. I'll tee this off with just a quick note that the census has been completed. We're still waiting on our final information to be sent to us. Every 10 years, we do look at doing redistricting within our ward system. We will be starting that process in the coming weeks and I will look to appoint a standing or a subcommittee to work on redistricting. So while we wait for the final information, we will start working on getting that committee all set. And so if there's members of the public that are interested in taking part in this committee, please let me know. With that, any other communications or council participation? Okay, that was easy. Moving on. Next up is Mayor's Report. Mr. Rishler.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. President, and everyone who has joined us here in the council chambers, as well as those of you at home. Just three quick announcements. We do have a very special Fall Festival. I'm going to save it, though, for Ms. Dugan to announce for October 30th, but I hope that she will put it on your calendar right now and that we will see you there. Also, just a reminder, that Election Day is November 2nd. However, there are other alternatives to voting in person. You can make sure to check out the Chester County Voter Services website to get all those details and those specific dates. But just make sure that you're voting. We have an election every single year. Make sure you turn out and you're participating in our democracy. Finally, last but not least, after having to take a year off, I am very excited to declare our official trick-or-treating hours for this year, which will be Sunday, October 31st, on Halloween itself, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. So this year's official trick-or-treating hours in the Borough of Phoenixville will be Sunday, October 31st, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. As always, I would just encourage you. You know your street, you know your neighbors, you know your family. Please make sure that you're being respectful. Certainly COVID is still a very real thing. Please be cautious and respectful of those around you, of your family members, as well as your neighbors, and take precautions. You know your street better than we do, better than I do. And just make sure that you're taking those precautions and being respectful of everyone within our community who may or may not wish to participate. So thank you so much. Thanks for being here and thanks for being part of this incredible community. Also, a great welcome to our two new officers. And thank you to the council also for the announcement tonight pending all of the little legalities and disclaimers, but our new chief. So thank you very much.
That was brief. That's true. That's true. Bounce it out. With that, we have appointments and public resolutions. At this time, we are actually in the rare situation where all of our boards and committees and commissions are actually currently full. So we do thank all of our residents who are currently serving on our boards and committees. If you're interested in joining for a future vacancy, please reach out to your councilperson or staff and we can send you the application and let you know when future vacancies are expected. But at this time, we're actually full up, so thank you for that. So we'll move on to new business. We have two items to consider. What is council's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to consider staff's recommendation to award the 2022 chemical bids.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Moore. Our annual contracting out for chemicals. Any questions on the bid process or the staff recommendation?
I think it was fairly clearly outlined, yeah.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 5-0 with Mr. Kirchner out of the room at the moment.
Moving on to the next item. I'd like to make a motion to approve staff's recommendation to reject all bids received for ramp railing and stairs for Reeves Park Band Shell and authorize staff to reject the bid, or the project, or to rebid the project.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Weiss, second by Mr. Moore. Any questions on this staff recommendation?
I guess I'd like to understand how we can reconsider rebidding it. Do we have to reconsider the approach? Or what do we, in terms of the designer, in order to get the better price?
Pretty much the latter. We had an educated estimate of what we thought it was going to be. Obviously, there was something in the language that caused literally these to be well over the budgeted amount. So we've got to go back and take apart the language that is in there, figure out what may have caused these bidders to be so high. Once we figure that out, then we would go back through the process, reconfigure the specifications, and then put it out to advertisement and bid again.
Is any of it involved with the, you know, general price of materials going up? Or are they be allowed for that?
The honest answer is we haven't really broken it down that well. But what I will tell you is that this is probably going to be geared to a re-advertising over the winter, after the first of the year, and look towards a springtime construction. That'll give us time to assess, ask questions, things that we want to find out, and put it back together. But it won't go back out to bid before the end of this year.
Any other questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 5-0 with Mr. Kirchner out of the room. We have no resolutions on tonight's agenda, so I need a motion to open a public hearing.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to open a public hearing for the consideration of the ordinance of the Amendment to Chapter 27, zoning small wireless facilities in the right-of-way.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, yeah, motion carries 5-0-1, as Mr. Kirchner has rejoined us. With that, I'll hand it off to our solicitor, Chuck Garner.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. This is a public hearing for the purpose of taking public comment. This public hearing is required by both the municipality's planning code and the Borough zoning ordinance. Anytime the Borough wishes to amend provisions of its zoning ordinance, this type of hearing is a requirement. The reason for the change to the zoning ordinance was precipitated by Act 50, which was adopted recently by the state legislature. Act 50 sets standards or allows municipalities to set standards for small wireless facilities that are located in the right-of-way. The Act indicated municipalities under the uniform standards could provide regulations and encourage them to do so prior to October 29th, which was the effective date of the new law. Procedurally, this hearing notice was advertised in the Mercury on September 27th and October 4th. The notice that was advertised indicated that the public hearing would be held this evening and the council possibly would vote on the ordinance amendment following the hearing. In addition, because this is an amendment to the zoning ordinance, notice was provided to the local planning commission and Chester County Planning Commission with respect to the ordinance and its changes. In addition, since the ordinance was not fully advertised in the paper, the ordinance was provided to the Chester County Law Library. Frankly, the ordinance establishes the regulations outlined in Act 50. Section 1 includes adding definitions of what we term as a municipal poll and also describing in detail small wireless facilities, which would be within the right-of-way. The remaining part of the ordinance essentially provides for the regulations under Act 50. Mr. President, at this point, I would open up the floor to any public comment with respect to the ordinance change. If anyone has any public comment, we would ask for your name and address. Staff will recognize you and would be happy to take your comment. Is there anyone that wishes to provide comment as part of this advertised public hearing for the zoning ordinance change?
Just kidding. I have, oh, no.
Mr. President, while we're waiting, I just would again remind council that based upon the advertisement, council is permitted to enact the ordinance this evening following the public hearing if it chooses to do so. And frankly, given the time constraints under the Act, it's probably a wise move to adopt the ordinance as soon as you're ready to do so.
Mr. Kajak, I've turned on your microphone.
Will this have any regard to the Hall Street Extension slash the Hall Street Alignment?
No, this is purely a zoning ordinance change that would regulate small wireless facilities in the right-of-way. So no impact on that.
That's all I wanted for the record. Thank you.
Certainly.
I want to clarify that statement. Okay. The right-of-way, any right-of-way, this ordinance would have an impact on whether that's a right-of-way that exists today or a right-of-way that is created after today.
That's correct. But certainly, the purpose of the ordinance, just so we're clear, is to establish regulations for these facilities. That's the gist of the ordinance.
This is largely pertaining to things like 5G and the repeaters and transmitters.
Correct. If council recalls, this has been an ongoing debate between cell tower providers and municipalities probably for the last four years. There was a continuing debate as to whether or not these were considered utilities or nonutilities and exactly how they could be regulated. And obviously, the cell tower companies tried very forcefully to get them preempted from municipal regulation. This legislation, in my view, was a compromise between municipal forces and cell tower forces to try and come up with some reasonable accommodation for both sides. So everyone knew what they were dealing with for these types of matters. And again, we don't know what the future technology holds, but certainly, as we sit here today, this is what we are mandated with by virtue of the state legislature. So that's really what this is. Nothing more.
They also stipulated a timeline in Act 50, I believe.
Yes, timelines for permitting. There's mandatory or maximum fees that can be charged.
But also for adopting this.
What's that?
If I remember correctly, also for adopting.
Yes, October 29th was the deadline effective date to try and get this in place.
Any members of the public wishing to make comment during this public hearing? Please raise your hand and staff will select you and announce you.
Ms. Duckdale, I've turned on your microphone.
Hello, I'm Jane Duckdale again at 229 Morgan Street. I'm so glad that the regulation allows for municipal action on this. I would like to ask our council to amend, however it's written, to allow individual homeowners to opt out of any devices immediately adjacent to their homes. There's a lot of debate about the effect of 5G on people and I would appreciate council taking advantage of the opportunity to make a municipal amendment. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments from the public or council?
Dr. Sanic, I've turned on your microphone.
Dr. Sannick, we can't hear you if you were speaking into your microphone.
Any other members of the public wishing to make comment on this public hearing, please raise your hand digitally.
Mr. President, if there's no more public comment, it will be appropriate for council when they're ready to close the public hearing and consider the ordinance this evening that's in front of you.
President, I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I opposed.
Motion carries six zero, the public hearing has been closed, what is council's pleasure pertaining to the amendment?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance amendment to chapter 27 zoning small wireless facilities in the right of ways.
Second. Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Kirchner, questions on the motion, questions on the item? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I opposed.
Motion carries six zero. With that, we'll move into reports of committees, boards and commissions. First off tonight, we have planning commission, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had the September planning commission meeting actually was split into two sessions due to an extensive. Amount of topics to be covered, some projects were. Continuing in develops development in several of them, as well as we've had some further discussion about. Zoning amendments to adapt for use and parking and building placement. Those discussions are ongoing tonight, there are two projects to be proposed for the Borough Review. Like to open the first one, which is a make a make. Make a motion to approve the. Grant final approval of the subdivision land development plan known as 222 224 Hall Street. This is a project that is described as consisting of 15 apartment units and associated parking areas and other improvements on on Hall Street.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Kirchner. The applicant is here tonight if. Start with this, motion second by Mr. Kirchner, questions on the motion? Sorry. Questions on the motion if it just drew a blank, I'm sorry, we do have the applicant here tonight, council has any questions? For this application for 224 Hall Street.
So I think it would be nice just to give an overview for the public. I know we've gotten to to look at this and not many of us have joined Planning Commission. Mr. Moore has definitely been involved in Planning Commission. This is a reuse of a currently. A property that is not.
Yeah, I'd be glad to describe it, it's it's the referred to as the former Hungarian Club, it's on it's on Hall Street and. The converting existing building that was that's basically been unused for several years. Into, I believe it's three. Fifteen apartment units. Three of which are studio apartments and. The parking has been approved and also. The only thing that the in terms of waivers that the applicant is asking for is a waiver from. The environmental impact analysis, which typically is not done. And the Borough Engineer said is not typically done for a completely developed property.
So 15 apartments and there will be parking for those apartments on premises?
That's correct.
If the applicant would like to come up and just give us a quick. Quick minute background, I think that'd be helpful for all of council.
And to pile on the question about the parking, I believe there's a certain amount of parking for residents and a certain amount of parking. For visitors of those residents, if you could specify how many spaces there are, that'd be great.
Sure, Ryan Tobin. One of the owners of this property project, there are. Now 19 parking spaces for the 15 units. 19 parts for the 15 units, 12 one bedrooms, three studios. Everything said previously is correct, 15 units repurposing an existing structure. Underutilized. Little bit of an eyesore and. I didn't, I'm happy to answer any questions, I.
And I believe you'll still be keeping the parking lot access off of both roads.
It will be. There will be an entrance and an exit.
Okay, that makes sense.
Not not ingress and egress on both.
Sure, that makes sense, though, okay, thank you.
I don't have any questions, I just want to make sure since the applicant was here that we gave him a chance to speak.
I appreciate.
I think it's a good adaptive reuse of the of a of a building and it looked like you were doing some dressing up on the exterior as well.
Yeah, and I have had constituents reach out about concerns of the property, so certainly appreciate what you're doing to update the neighborhood.
Okay, appreciate it.
If I may, Mr. President, thank you, I I do have a question, but I'd also like to make a comment, I know this. Property for years has been underutilized and at times abandoned, so I do think this is a. A good reuse for the property, I my question is, will there be any additional landscaping added?
That is a condition that we're satisfying with the borough. With Ray, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I believe there was discussion about landscaping. Along the border of the property with the other property as well as some landscaping around the the entrance up to this up to the. The second floor walkway, correct? Correct, and yes, landscaping where you mentioned and fencing probably along the like half wall. That upsets the neighbor.
Any other questions?
Yes, to follow up on that, with regard to landscaping, has that been updated since the September 1, 2021? Letter from Ray, because in that letter it says. Landscape plan has not been provided.
The September.
September 1. 2021 letter from Ray on page.
If I might, Mr. Kirchner, the resolution item J says the plan shall be amended to incorporate approval of additional landscaping details. Submitted reviewed and approved by the Borough Land Planner, which is subsequent to the September 21 set of plans. So they do have to send something to Mr. Odd for review before and incorporate them into the plans. That's part of the resolution.
Thank you.
Great, all those in favor? Opposed? Wow, okay, you got a six zero. Thank you.
Thank you both so much for coming out, yeah.
Look forward to seeing the improvements. Okay, next up.
Mr. President.
Back to Mr. Moore.
Make a motion to the second project this evening tonight that the make a motion to the. Grant final approval of the subdivision in land development plan known as 252 Phoenixville. Located on 252 Morgan Street.
Second.
And motion by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Weiss, questions on this? Application, we'd also have the applicant for this project here tonight if the if council has any questions specifically to this project.
I'll just lay out a short narrative, this has been through planning commission for quite some time. It is laying putting in two buildings. A total of 15 apartment units, the buildings are three stories high along Morgan Street. Where this in the same property where the the existing old school is. It does preserve help preserve that overall property. I'll note that through extensive discussion with the planning commission. The applicant actually reduced the size of the project from 18 units and an entire building to 15 units. And adjusted the layout of the new building so that would improve the view of the. Of the property, particularly as if you're driving south on Gay Street. And it the in terms of the waivers requested, they are requesting. The standard conditions and approval in terms of final steps. The waivers are basically to be waived at the typical environmental analysis. As well as some details around a the turning radius on the one corner, which matches the other corner. And all of the waivers that were requested have been, no objections from the Borough Engineers were raised. And I thought it was, I think it's a really good balance of maintain, you know, I appreciate the developer working. With planning commission to, you know, adjust their initial plans in order to help us. You know, meet some of the concerns.
Agreed. Any questions for the applicant from council?
Am I correct in understanding that there would actually be an additional entrance added in the new plan because right now it's just one one way?
Yes. That is correct, and similar to the last project, it's going to be a one way in, one way out.
In on gay out on Morgan, is that right?
I know there was concern about open space and that and such, and I do see in the plan there is like a patio area, it's going to be.
That's correct, there's this, I guess this plan has been reviewed for over a year at this point, it currently was. Pushed out towards the corner of Morgan Street, continuing the Morgan Street street scape, but after getting comments back from the county planning commission. And discussions through the planning commission, we've slid that back approximately to the mid where the mid center of where the building is so that. It could be viewed from the intersection of Morgan and Gay and created more of a plaza area there, there's still significant green space. Out in front of the building on Gay Street and around that Plaza area. It'll be a nice focal point to draw people's vision towards the entrances of that. Also, although not in the hard district, based on the recommendations of the planning commission. The applicant has agreed to keep the buildings looking similar to the twin. The the brick twin and townhouses that are already existing on there with with facades that resemble brick.
And I believe that included in. Originally you had just like covered entranceways and you're.
Right, there was originally raised, there was raised patios. And it was more of a stucco looking building, but based on the recommendations, we agreed to do the covered patios. And resemble facades that resemble brick.
Does this project have have any impact on the existing building that's there?
Other than it'll allow the property to generate income to dump into further renovating the existing building. There there has been a lot of deferred maintenance from the prior owner, I think, or he's owned it for approximately two years now, two years. So this will allow them to generate additional income. Work on renovations, there's the existing bell tower needs work, the roof, the parking lot is disintegrating. And this will allow them to generate income to dump into the existing structure of the building, but for all intensive purposes. The exterior of the building will remain the same as it is today.
Thank you.
How will the addition of these units affect the parking? For the overall.
There's more than adequate parking pursuant to the the parking ordinance there right now. I think 90% of the lot is paved. This will more more define the parking spaces and is determined there was more than adequate parking for the total number of units. You know how many parking spaces we have?
If you could just repeat that since.
He indicated the ordinance requires 46 parking spaces and we're providing 50 parking spaces. We're also going to further define some landscaping in in the parking lot and curbing. Around some of those areas to to further define it for the residents. And there's also with with regard to waiver, the environmental impact assessment, it was, you know, determined this is a an existing. Developed site, almost fully paved, currently there is no stormwater management on the site. And this project is going to incorporate stormwater management to control stormwater that currently isn't existing today.
Any other questions for council, Mr. Kirchner?
Yeah, I have, I don't know if it's a question, but I am highly interested in condition J. In the resolution with regard to referencing the the land planner's recommendation on. The fronts, front porches and the bricks, and I think you addressed that. I think that's very important to sort of blend this in with the neighborhood. And as far as environmental impact statements go, I I don't think there was one submitted back in the 1860s when the original. Building was put there, so might might be something in the archives of the Lincoln administration. But I I am curious, will there be new fencing installed around? This property, because I think now it's a chain link.
Brendan, Brendan, if you could just step up to the microphone, so since we're on Zoom, we want to make sure everybody can hear, thanks.
I'm Brandon Whitaker, I'm the property owner, to answer your question. There is chain link fence on Morgan Street and Gay Street that will be removed. There will be fencing on the interior.
And will the parking lot entrances be gated?
No.
Any other questions from council? Great, all those in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion carries five one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Moore?
No, the next planning commission meeting is this Thursday. At our usual time. Of seven.
Moving on, we have Harb, Mr. Weiss.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Ewald, two items out of Harb this week. First, I'll make a motion to consider the approval of the certificate of appropriateness for renovation repair and addition request for 34 South Main Street. As recommended in Harb, six to one per the action memo of October 4th, 2021.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Weiss, second by Ms. Berkeley, questions on the motion?
So.
Go ahead.
Just to clarify, I think you did earlier, Mr. President, but this is just for Harb. Recommendations, it has nothing to do with anything internally, it's external, it's looking at things like stucco and such, correct? So what we're approving tonight is the outside of the building. Because they're adding the stairwell and the the elevator, is that correct?
So the new application has a stairwell and elevator tower. The rest of the plan is unchanged, so that has already been approved by Harb, so this is just pertaining to that one.
The outside piece of it.
You know, yeah, on the one small corner, so.
And so that's exciting news because they're adding the stairwell.
Absolutely.
Elevator, which was something that we had really been talking about. And I did check in with planning commission and again, completely separate, so they don't feel as though this decision would have any bearing on their decisions. For this project in the future.
As it just paint and finishes, yep.
Yep. Thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions from staff or from council?
Yes, I have a question for Ms. Berkeley, did you say there was an elevator?
That's the plan now, because they're doing that, they they needed this Harb recommendation or this Harb approval for the out. Outside purposes of.
The project is then going in front of planning commission on Thursday.
On Thursday, it'll go in front of.
The actual, the the actual architectural aspects of the project.
But planning commission was clear that if they have to come back to Harb, they will have to go back to Harb, so. I think the two are independent of each other, just for clarity for everybody.
Absolutely.
Yes, that was one of the reasons I voted against this originally because there was no elevator servicing that, so. Hard to see that they added that in.
Absolutely, they they found a good solution, I think, with with where they're placing it. Which will make the whole building a lot more accessible, which is something the Masons always had a problem with. Okay, all in favor? Opposed, motion carries six zero, Mr. Weiss.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Ewald, second. Yes, thank you, Mr. Ewald. Second item coming out of Harb, I'd like to make a motion to consider the resolution granting, sorry, to consider the approval of the certificate of appropriateness for the addition on the existing property request for one hundred Bridge Street as recommended in Harb, six to one per their action memo of October fourth, twenty twenty one.
Second.
A motion by Miss, Mr. Weiss, second by Mr. Moore.
And I believe the applicant is here if there are questions.
Yes. Mr. Dugan.
Well, I just have a couple of questions, but I guess I can let the applicant speak first before I go.
Jared, if you want to step up to the microphone and introduce yourself.
Jared Atkins with one hundred Bridge Street, Blue Burger Stelling. Our plan is to, we have an assistant pergola. It has done very well for us, but we want to continue that into the winter time and get away from doing a temporary tar. So we have a beautiful addition, adding three glass doors on the side and then indoor open kind of glass doors in front, going to the customary brick that we already have and a new stucco finish. We're matching the old building while taking kind of a contemporary look into matching the building style. Really for us is just trying to make sure, make that more permanent and allow us to have more space going into the winter time where we desperately need additional space there. So just trying to make it look better than the temporary siding that we have now.
Questions from council?
Well, my question actually was, is this covering the mural completely?
What you, what you can see today basically is what you will see. I mean, you're not going to be able to see through, you you kind of see a little bit on the bottom underneath that pergola, but unless you're really looking for it, you're not going to notice it. So this will, what you see at the top of that is exactly what you would see. You know, possibly, and Jared could answer this, but possibly, you know, once they have the the project completed, maybe they consider working with an artist to try to blend something in there that, but that's a, that's a, that's not part of this application. It's a general thought.
I'm disappointed to hear that we're going to, I mean, like, I didn't really like losing the view of the mural to begin with. But now if we're going to lose even more of it, like kind of permanently, then, I mean, I would really hope that somebody would consider working with somebody to see what we can do about that situation. Well, you know what? That's, that's all I'm.
Other questions for the applicant or the project or comments?
So I know this has been a hot topic related to this project and I obviously know the artist well, know the business owner well. It was an unfortunate situation where, you know, business and art and, you know, both have done great for downtown. I did speak with the artist last night and, you know, I know Jared had reached out to her as well. She's kind of moved on from this. It's unfortunate at this point that it is what it is. She and I even had talked about like, how can we protect art in the future? But really, she said, from an artist's perspective, that would make murals and live art like that so like inhibitive because then people won't want to commit to it. So she's just kind of said, it's one of those situations where someone loses. And, you know, the business owner has done what's within his right and it's just so unfortunate. And I know I was disappointed. I brought it up when we voted on it before. But I think it's all food for thought and also understanding that, you know, both have done good things for our community and it's one of those situations where somebody loses.
Any comments from council, Mr. Kirk?
Yeah, I'm I'm going to pick up on what Ms. Dugan said. I mean, when this original pergola went up, we got a lot of blowback on this from residents in the community. They didn't like the fact that it was blocking the the mural. And I think that kind of stuck up on the beautification advisory committee, too. So, you know, I, 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 I see this as blocking more of it. I I don't know about working something out because looking at the 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 architecture of this, I I don't see how you can extend a mural onto this, so. You know, the, I, you know, people in the community are going to notice it and are going to say something about it. So I'm going to have an answer for them, my answer anyway.
Questions or comments?
I will say thank you to the applicant for providing the additional detail that took place or that was added between the Harb meeting and now. And it helps us to paint a clearer picture of what we're voting on tonight. So thank you.
Actually, I do have one more question, one quick one. It was just, why was this approved before all the information? Why did this go through Harb before all the information was submitted? I don't understand. I was on Harb for like fourteen years and that didn't happen.
I don't have an answer.
I honestly don't have an answer either. I know there was a lot of discussion about it. I think everybody on Harb recognized that what was intended, the fact that the document that you have in your packet now wasn't available for the Harb was discussed at at length. They chose by six to one to go ahead and move it forward. They understood what was trying to occur. And on the premise that if the documentation didn't come in before Thursday of last week and into your packets, you might have had a different motion coming out of the, the representative from Harb. So it, the discussion I'll have internally, of course, but it doesn't change what transpired in this, in this situation. They understood it and they still made a motion and and moved forward.
With that, we'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries four two. With that, Mr. Kirk, regional planning committee?
Thank you, Mr. President. There's not much going on, regional planning. As as I recall, East Pikeville Township rejected a, an ordinance for workforce housing. I think they're, they're going to take another look at that to come up with something. There was, there is a project that Church Housing has proposed for Route one thirteen near the intersection of Pot House Road for workforce housing. And the, the or the zoning change that would have enabled that did not get through the supervisors, from what I understand. Otherwise, West Pikeville is now fully integrated into the regional plan. We're back up to six municipalities now. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirk. With that, Ms. Dugan, record.
Thank you. I'll first start by just reminding everybody that the Phoenixville Harvest Festival is, is coming this month. And especially towards the end of the month, I think it starts on the twenty eighth and goes through the the whole weekend. There are different events each day. However, I do, there is a website, it's Phoenixville, Phoenixville Harvest Festival dot com. But they're a little slow to update the information since this is a new thing that we're trying to do since we've eliminated the parade. But we are still doing a major event in partnership with the Phoenixville Hospital, Parks and Rec, the Office of Emergency Management. But what we're trying, we're still going to have a major event on Saturday, October twentieth, where there will be a costume contest. And I encourage everyone to check out that website and try to follow along and see if you can go because give us a little room to error here because this is the first time we're starting this whole project now. We're making it into a whole weekend type thing rather than just a, a half an hour parade. So moving right along, the rest of the things that, the programs that we have now that are coming and starting or have started this fall. We've got, all of this stuff is available on phoenixville.org, on the Parks and Recreation page. And you can look up, find out if there's associated costs or what the times are, what the opportunities are. But we have things like Tinker Garden, which is bringing early education to Reeves Park and classes. And it's from eighteen months to eight years, enjoy freedom of independent exploration through well-designed play-based activities. Then there's Snapology. And there, there are so many different versions of that. They have Monster Media, Kinderbox. There, the age range for these, it goes from four to twelve on most of these. And there's a program, there's programs in September that have already started, but then there's ones in October that haven't quite started yet. So did I forget any of them? Let me quickly look. Oh, and then finally, there is the, there's a mini yoga retreat called Reset at the Res. It's a take a half day just for you with meditation and yoga and a couple soul hearing, soul healing outdoor activities that would last from like ten AM to one in the afternoon. So I encourage you to check out all of our programs and I hope to see you at the Halloween Festival or Fall Festival, excuse me.
Thank you, Ms. Dugan. Beautification did not meet last month. Their meeting will be Monday, the eighteenth, so this coming Monday. With that, Ms. Berkeley with Tac?
Same for Tac. So we were, we did not meet this week, but we will be meeting next week.
Great. When I move on to council referred to from police or from, from committee, police personnel, public safety.
No, no action report directly out of committee, but obviously we've been doing a lot on the personnel side. I'm very excited for that. Very exciting stuff to happen for the police and fire departments as we move forward.
Absolutely. Thank you. With that, I spoke with Mr. Soto. There's nothing to report out for Parks and Rec. So, Mr. Kirkner, Ms. Berkeley, would one of you like to report out for policy?
I mean, I always would allow Mr. Kirkner and his institutional knowledge to go first, but I'm happy to talk. We all know.
I'll split them with you.
There we go. All right. Well, I'm already, I already got my mic. Oh, you got your mic on, too. I'm impressed. But I'll make a motion to consider, consider scheduling and advertising a public hearing to consider an ordinance adopting dedication of certain public improvements, those generally being streets located within Eland Downs Community, developed by Eland Downs, Inc., and to establish and open such streets as public streets located within the borough of Phoenixville as recommended in Committee three zero.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on this motion? Fairly straightforward. And I think this is just doing some cleanup on some, some housekeeping, essentially. So any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero with Ms. Dugan out of the room.
Mr. President, I'll also make a motion to schedule and advertise a public hearing to consider the ordinance a member to Chapter fifteen, motor vehicles and traffic recommended in Committee three zero.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Kirkner. Questions on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries five zero with Ms. Dugan out of the room. For item number three, we're actually going to pull that from the agenda tonight and we're going to send that back to policy and staff for further, for the review and revision. So that leaves us with item four.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we schedule and advertise a public hearing to consider an ordinance authorizing the execution of the cable franchise agreement between the Borough of Phoenixville and Verizon Pennsylvania LLC.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kirkner, second by Mr. Moore. Questions on this item? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Carries five zero with Ms. Dugan out of the room. Anything else out of policy? Okay. Next up, we have ITT, Mr. Weiss.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Ewald. Nothing out of ITT this week. Our next meeting is Tuesday, October nineteenth at seven PM.
Thank you. And just in time, that leaves us with finance. Ms. Dugan.
Wow, that went really quickly. I barely made it. Okay, then, um, I will bundle one, two, three, four and five. I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty one prepaid dated eight, one, twenty twenty one to eight, thirty one, twenty twenty one in the amount of two million, one hundred and seventy seven thousand, six hundred and forty eight dollars and fifty five cents to approve the twenty twenty one prepaid credit card statement dated eight, one, twenty twenty one to eight, thirty one, twenty twenty one in the amount of seventy four thousand, one hundred and twenty nine dollars and thirty eight cents to approve the twenty twenty one prepaid ACH dated eight, thirty one, twenty twenty one in the amount of twenty five thousand, six hundred and sixty five dollars and thirty seven cents. And do I have to break out the resolution part? Or can I just bundle this?
You can bundle those.
Okay. And so also I would like to approve a resolution eliminating member payments to the police pension plan fund for the calendar year twenty twenty to twenty twenty one and a resolution eliminating member payments to the police personnel plan fund for the calendar year twenty twenty two.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Mr. Moore, bundled motion. And the last two items are contractually obligated, so just for your information, anybody at home that wasn't sure. Any other questions on the bundled motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Ms. Dugan.
Second.
Sorry about that. I forgot to put my thing on.
We have a motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Mr. Kirkner. Questions on this motion? This is for the, the low bridge, the Main Street Bridge. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Ms. Dugan.
Um, I won't be making this last motion. I will make a comment as soon as someone else does for number six.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we adopt the proposal for downtown tree lighting.
A motion by Mr. Kirkner, second by Mr. Moore. Ms. Dugan.
All right. Now, this one I have a major problem with because we are in the middle of budget season and I already, you know, ranted about this at our last meeting. All of this money, if, whether we're using, would actually be in our, our general fund, correct, Mr. Crack?
That's correct. The, the, the money that was acquired through the sale of the two forty one Taylor Street, at least for now, goes back into the general fund.
Well, the thing is, we have a whole long laundry list of things to approve for our, for the budget for next year. And I want to know why this suddenly gets in and gets proposed. I mean, shouldn't this have just been on the budget, like the agenda debate for the budget, too? Why are we rushing through with this? Which thing are we going to cut of all the things that we're looking to add? What are we going to cut rather than, and we're just going to spend, what is this, about seventy, seventeen thousand dollars? Is that correct, what this was? Something around there.
Just under seventeen, correct.
So what I'm, what I'm saying is I don't understand why we would throw money at decorations, which the trees are, we're decorating the trees, when we have other things on the list for the budget to approve out of the same fund. I don't, it just escapes me, the logic of this. I'm finished.
And and just as a follow up, you know, as Mr. Crack mentioned, this is using the funds of a, of a, the sale of an under, underutilized lot on Taylor slash Bridge Street. This was a project and proposal we've been discussing in infrastructure for a number of years at this point. So, you know, I, I know it is decoration, but, you know, we're looking, the thought was to spend money gleaned from the, from Bridge Street on, on Bridge Street rather than other funds that that aren't directly from Bridge Street. So any other questions or comments on the motion?
If I may, Mr. President, at the Finance Committee meeting, I did bring up about bird life on the, in the trees downtown here and the impact that lighting would have on them. I did my own unofficial survey and I would like to add that I am not an aviary scientist in any way. I'm just some guy who was walking up and down the street one morning. I, every tree from down here, from Uncle Bee's to to the other end of Bridge Street, Ashland Street, I didn't see one nest. I, I looked, I, I looked up, I must, I must have been quite a sight that morning, you know, some some guy walking around like this, but.
There was a wellness check called in, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I didn't, I didn't see, I, I saw one bird at that whole time and it was, it was early in the morning. I mean, it was prime bird time, I think. So, but. So, but I'm also going to add that uh Ms. Dugan is, I think she, she makes a, a good argument, I'm although I made the motion, I'm, I'm going to flip my vote, I'm glad we have this debate. You persuaded me. Thank you, Mr. President.
Absolutely, any other questions on the motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed?
No.
Motion carries four two, anything else out of finance tonight?
No, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. With that, we will, uh that concludes our uh scheduled part of the agenda for tonight, so we will open up our second and final round of public participation. Again, any members of the public who wish to make any comment, uh please raise your hand via the Zoom platform, staff will uh call on you, unmute you and and welcome you to uh uh make your comments to, or questions to council.
Ms. Gresham, I've turned on your microphone.
I didn't raise my hand.
Oh, sorry, your, your hand icon is up, I can put that down.
Sorry.
That's okay, no problem. I currently don't have any other hands raised at this time.
Great, we'll give it just a moment. Okay, with that, we'll close this round of public participation, uh staff reports are in the packets, Mr. Crack, were there any things that you needed to highlight?
Uh we do have a, uh the first Friday uh uh scenario for tree lighting uh and in use of the uh Bridge of Main Street parking lot came up as a, as a significant topic. If you may or may not, customer may not be aware that, you know, for the last couple of years, we've had great difficulty in keeping uh the tree uh lighting situation at Renaissance Park there at uh the corner of Bridge and Main. The, the wind just keeps blowing the trees over, uh blowing lights, uh electrical problems and what have you, so this year uh in concert with a multitude of other things, we were actually uh looking to bring in uh uh a lighted tree and and use the main and Bridge Street parking lot, and so the uh there's an amended application, you've approved the, the first Fridays through November fifth, which is uh but they, they have come in and asked for a first Friday for uh December the third, and so that amended application is in the packet. And it would include the traditional tree lighting, I don't know if the, the mayor or uh it's real, if you have any uh input from the conversations that we had, but that's what this, that's what this is, it would require the continued closure of Bridge Street uh for one more week, uh the intended was through December twenty ninth, this would take it that weekend and then through December sixth.
Mr. Ashler, if you want to start.
Thank you so much, uh Mr. President, thank you, Mr. Crack. Um you know, in conversation certainly with a, a number of our stakeholders, uh this was, uh would be taking place of our, our traditional a holiday parade, the idea is that we would do some kind of modified uh program within the boundaries of the street closure. And um I think that it would be a really great concert, uh in concert with uh our businesses, our nonprofit community. Uh certainly the Borough and our team here, uh to ensure we have a really festive atmosphere and we're able to draw people in uh throughout that weekend, and I, I really think we'll be able to spur a lot of attention and interest in our downtown.
I know this is one that we've discussed internally, uh both with the mayor uh and Phoenixville First and the chamber. Um it's been well received, I think the proposal is, is a good one, I like the idea of, of really providing a safe and and stable place for the tree uh as well, I, I know I've talked with staff on a couple ideas that they've had for for really creating um a, a full dynamic um holiday escape in the parking lot. But also, uh this would then pair well with, with the transition that we're making of having Reeves Park as a winter wonderland uh location for the remainder of that month. So. Any other, I, I guess we would need a, a motion to, to amend this, so if um let's start with that, what is council's pleasure for the amendment to this TCE?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss, uh discussion, um questions, comments from council, Mr. Kirk.
One more question, on, on the street closure, this, this would be a street closure as it is now from two PM Friday till Sunday morning?
Monday morning.
Monday morning, correct.
Uh that's how it's currently proposed, uh with the addition that we'd be closing off Main Street for a portion of that. Uh in order to, to have a, a safe uh overflow and you provide enough distance for everybody, uh they were looking to have uh Main Street closed off for that, for that portion of time as well.
For the whole weekend.
Is it the whole weekend for Main, not for Main Street? Yeah, Bridge, Bridge Street for the whole weekend, Main Street only for uh for that night, similar to how we would do a normal first Friday pre pandemic. So to provide all those stores that are aligned, Main Street to, to have the uh improved visibility uh room for, for their vendors. The, the only addition I might say is that we, as we, well, it doesn't need to be an addition to the motion, but as we have for, for all of them, uh we still have the staff discretion, um should there be weather or any other reasons to, to not proceed, we always have the option to, to not do this, and if there is something that um is a clear reason to, you know, to cancel, so uh thankfully, we've had a lot of really nice weekends this summer.
Look, could you clarify the description here, and the special event application says musical acts downtown and vendors in the main and Bridge Street. Is that for the whole weekend, or is that for just the musical acts and so forth, is that for the tree lighting event?
If I could have Ms. Getzfree go ahead and uh weigh in on it.
Sure, so um when we were initially talking through it, we were looking at doing this on Friday. Uh Friday night, we would have it uh where in the main and Bridge Street parking lot, we would do a tree lighting ceremony, we usually have carolers and different small musical acts that were spread throughout town. Uh the thought is, is that doing that within the closure itself, keeping that closure for the weekend and um and then only closing Main Street for, for Friday night, and the reason we were doing that is just to try to keep um social distancing even outside in the colder weather. Um and then also just from a different view shed, trying to get everyone just in the main and Bridge Street parking lot. It allows for a little bit more of an expansion of the view of the, of the tree itself. Uh for the road closure, we, we did discuss doing it for the entire weekend, just extending it that one more weekend, but that is something that we are open to a conversation. What we would do is we would then um open it back up, I guess, on, on that Saturday or Friday night after the entire ceremony is done. Um but just to keep it uh consistent with what we've been doing every weekend, we thought it would be uh better for marketing and, and just getting people around town and everything else is we, we would just keep it closed for, for the entire weekend and open up Monday morning.
I, I'll just, I, I hear a lot of concerns repeatedly by the Main Street people as well as the residents in that neighborhood finding great difficulty with the street closure and like and I haven't heard anybody come forward and say, really keep it open, can you keep it closure right through into December? So I, I, I wonder, I, I, I really support this event and the modification, but I'm thinking that maybe considering what we've been hearing, uh we should, we should maybe treat it more as a first Friday uh type event pri- prior to COVID, private to the Bridge Street closures. And just do it, do it as a closure for that, that one event, I really want to have this event, thanks for moving the tree, I think that's a great idea. But, but um you know, I, I think we, we, we've hea-, we've been hearing concerns by the, the business people on Main Street and also the residents, we just heard more tonight. And you know, we, we made a decision about the Bridge Street closure that, you know, I think some people have depended upon in terms of when it's ending, and we, we may need to, you know, you know, we, we, I think we always agree that we would be open to paying attention to what all the residents and the business people were saying uh as this went, went along, so I think, I think we should maybe consider amending this, or I'm not a good offer an amendment, I'd like to use some more discussion, but um I'm, I'm concerned about putting one more Bridge Street closure in the beginning of December. Uh yep, question, have we, have we continued um surveying uh the businesses on Bridge Street regarding the closure?
Oh, so to address that, just slightly, we have, and we do actually have an overwhelming amount of positive response uh to the Bridge Street closure from both residents and businesses. I would just caution, certainly I do know as a resident of Bridge Street, I live right on Bridge Street. And I will certainly say with caution that I, I believe that if we were to have the, a full conversation, we would really need to take into consideration uh the large number of businesses that actually support and residents who actually support the downtown street closure, I would say um it's a, it would be very evident if you were to go out on any weekend that actually I would tell you, not only evident, but I would tell you there would be a safety concern, given the number of people on Bridge Street and the number of people probably would not fit safely and comfortably on the sidewalks themselves. I will say that the conversation around the closure specifically of this, for this holiday based event is not only in consideration of the uh closures that we already have had going, but also uh with the idea of safety in mind, when you see the number of children playing out in that closed, enclosed area. When you see also people's desire still to provide some level of social distancing, so certainly I do not discount that um the street closure can be challenging for a number of residents and businesses. But I would caution us that if we were to have a proper conversation around that, we'd want to make sure to en- to, uh to ensure that we're including all of the voices in that. And that there is a large number of voices that would be extremely positive and um accepting of that uh street closure. I do think that the big challenge, I mean, if I were to just provide this, this last little piece of information for the council is that the biggest challenge is that we have been in a transition where we have transitioned from what we had to do to keep ourselves afloat during the pandemic, and we could go certainly into this for, for hours. Um and we have, we were able to keep ourselves afloat, but also now looking forward as to what will be the attraction to continue to put Phoenixville on the map, put us forward and to encourage people to come back to our community and support our downtown. Uh certainly, I think one only needs to look at the Holy Ghost, our dear friends at Holy Ghost who have started providing parking not only on the weekends, but every single night of the week, given the popularity of our downtown um streets. So I would just, uh I would say, you know, those are generally strong indicators of people coming into our community. Gone are the days, and, and I, I, please, I do not mean to offend anybody, but gone are the days where people can park out front of a specific store and walk straight into it. And I don't necessarily think that's a bad thing, I think that that indicates we are becoming a popular location. The work that everyone has done in this community is working, the work of our business community is working, and we are an attraction. And at the same time, I'll say, if you've ever been to the King of Prussia, uh New King of Prussia development over there, that was recently built with current and modern traffic patterns in mind, and I can't find a parking spot there either, but I'm willing to walk because that's a destination and it, and we are a destination also.
Just, just one thing to, to add on to the mayor's comment, um it's both retail and restaurant that, that we're hearing from directly in the conversations that I have, and then I know the mayor has, that are appreciative and, and stating that they're having some of their best sales uh since they've been here, so there, there are both sides of the conversation to be had, but um we're certainly seeing certain, you know, a, a large number of retail and restaurants uh truly maximizing uh the opportunity.
Yeah, um and, and just to add on, I too am hearing overwhelming support for the closure um both just in word of mouth, but also through these uh surveys that we've seen that kind of provide that empirical data. So I do understand that it's not ideal for everybody, um but I did want to at least mention that those two sources of information are pointing uh clearly in one direction for me.
And, and that said, with, you know, if, if council's in favor of moving forward with the uh, the first Friday, we can um of course have continued conversations, I, I would stress that if we were to look to only do a first Friday that we uh we do the breakdown on Saturday morning, not Friday night uh for the Bridge Street, just uh in terms of both staffing and just general safety of of uh the machinery that we need to use to, to remove the, the blockades, so um but that, that can be a conversation that we carry forward and, and you know, discuss at a future date as well.
So uh if you could clarify scheduling in terms of the Bridge Street closures, I thought you said the last one was November third currently scheduled.
Thirtieth.
Thirty, oh thirtieth.
Yeah, so, so when we.
This, I've been hearing you guys say extend it, so it would be just adding one more weekend.
Sure, so, so our original intent was that um we encapsulate both uh Black Friday and Small Business Saturday into the street closure uh when we, when we took this action back in March, um I believe, so the, the intent was that we, we capture that weekend um in terms of benefiting sales.
And we are so, just Mr. Moore for your, for your information, certainly all of the council and, and to those of you who watch this, you know, we are extremely cognizant of and understanding of the challenges facing our business community. Certainly, we know that this is a shift and, and we know that we are asking people to take on a lot, and that's not only our, our businesses, but also our residents. Um at the same time, I would say, you know, we're also working in conjunction with our Chamber of Commerce and some of our local business owners who will actually be providing a training uh to business owners to uh best utilize the street closure. Because we have found that some of our um retail businesses have had extreme success. I mean, where I'm saying like in the first quarter of this last year, they have done more business than they have ever done in their entirety of their business. Uh that's what it's been like for some of our partners, uh during the pandemic, we've had restaurants have their largest sales ever on a single night, not during the pandemic, I'm just saying ever. So what we're doing is working, but we do certainly all need to work together and we need to make resources available to all of our business partners to ensure that they are able to maximize the benefit of having the street closure. And I think that having an event like this is really just that, for the first time, and, and I will put this out also just for a, a nugget of thought. We haven't really promoted our downtown closures to the external public. Um because we know what that looks like, we know what that looks like at a food truck festival when you're getting thirty thousand people. But I think as we move forward in the future, we have to be cognizant that more and more people will want to come and enjoy our downtown, but this specific event, the holiday event, uh will provide not only a nice kind of community based event where we're all able to come together, but as Mr. Uwold said, is a great way to tie in a number of other programs like Luminarya, uh you know, Small Business Saturday. And it's kind of, it's a nice wrap up, I believe, to the entire season.
If I may, Mr. President, I, I think this is also um a matter of balance, I mean, I, I hear from Bridge Street merchants, they love it. I hear from Church Street residents, Prospect Street residents, Main Street merchants, they're not so crazy about it. And we're talking about um shutting down for another a weekend before Christmas, I mean, they only get so many shopping weekends before Christmas. Uh we heard from Ms. Meadows tonight, who owns the toy store on Main Street. And, and I know I, I've heard from them before that they, they've had, they've had it rough when the streets, the street is closed downtown, and I think that uh, I mean, I, I, I think it would be a good idea to do it for Friday. I don't see why we would need to do it for that whole weekend and take away that entire weekend from uh, you know, one of that would, that would take um one of what? Three weekends left before Christmas shopping? Um from possibly helping out the merchants on Main Street, so I, I, I do think it's a matter of balance. Um and I understand the safety problem um there, I under, I, I know the Bridge Street merchants, they, they just they just love it, they can't get enough of it, but we have to balance that with other merchants, with residents, with their needs, and I, I, I think doing it for another entire weekend is I mean, how much is enough, and, and. I I remember when Phoenixville didn't have a parking problem, and it was it was not a place you would come to on Friday night. You know, on a Friday night after, you know, a week after Thanksgiving. But I also remember when first Fridays first started back in the early aughts, as we now say, that it was just the 200 block of Bridge Street that was closed. So so I I I do think we can titrate the closing for for this event. But I I also think that we have to we we have to keep a matter of balance in mind. And December 3rd, I don't think there's a I I don't know what the weather will be like. I mean, Cecily Tynan doesn't even know what the weather will be like. But I I think that outdoor dining will be rather difficult come December 3rd, so.
Well, I haven't offered an amend. And it's up. It's up to you if you want to make an amendment, or if if we're still going to proceed with the discussion that way. I haven't offered an amendment. I'm not. And I've heard enough from the rest of the team that perhaps I I don't have any objection to the full closure.
Mr. Moore, if I could, before Mr. Watson walks out, on Saturday, on Saturday morning, how early can we get our crews out there if we were to do it Saturday morning? I I think 7:00 o'clock in the morning would not interrupt any of the businesses. Yeah, I can have minutes 6:30, 7:00 o'clock, have it open in less than an hour.
If if that helps the possible amended motion. And that's for the Bridge Street section, because Main Street will reopen at nine ish that night, Friday night. Is there an amendment to the motion, or are we going to keep the motion as it stands?
May I ask for a clarification?
Absolutely.
The closing of the main, the lot at Main and Bridge, would that continue through the weekend?
The what we have to do is we have to sequester the area of where the the trees and and all of that would be. I'm I'll I'll defer to Ms. Getzfree to identify if there's anything that she anticipates going to take up for the entire weekend, the entire lot itself.
Not the entire lot. What we were looking at doing, and this is with a little bit more of a further discussion, is that we are hoping to put the tree in one of two spots in the center where there's about five or six parking spots. And there's a center pole with with lights that go around. We're looking at maybe putting the Christmas tree there as well as we were actually looking at putting it in the corner on the Borough Own stage, so it's actually lifted up a little bit. So and it would be in the corner where the electric panel is available to us. With that, it allows us to block off about four or five parking spots. And it is safe from, you know, any mischief as best as we can up on the stage itself. It's lifted, and then that now gives not only people who are in the lot, but people who are on Main Street or Bridge Street in the area, the ability to see the tree lit. It also goes off either place, if I am correct, will allow us to have it timed on going off with the other lights that that light the night on on a timer or on a on a sensor, I should say. So we're not looking at closing the entire lot. We wouldn't need to. We would just want to close off enough that we we go and we actually make it a safe environment. So if somebody wants to come and visit it, our thoughts are if we use the Borough Stage is that we would actually almost make it a backdrop. So if people did want to come and visit, they could use that as a backdrop or a photo opportunity with their family throughout the season. I know that that has that has happened in the past with the mural as a background. And we're looking at trying to accomplish the same thing, but just with a safe place for our tree to go with reliable electric. So that's the that's what we're looking at doing now.
All that to say that, yes, we will open the lot on Saturday.
Sorry, yes.
I I appreciate the detailed explanation.
Other questions, comments, or did we have an amendment to the motion? The motion is currently as it's presented on the agenda.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'll make an amendment to to the motion that we close the 100 and 200, 100 and 200 blocks of Bridge Street for Friday only. And that would include entire closure of, what is that, lot number two?
Main Bridge Lot.
Main and Bridge Lot on Friday with limited use through the weekend thereafter. And this would be that we would reopen the lot, everything at 7:00 AM on Saturday morning. Yes, with reopening by 7:00 AM ish Saturday morning.
So there's been amendments to the motion made, and that's going to include North Main Street as it's stated in the original amendment for Friday night only.
Correct.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Second.
So Ms. Berkeley, amended motion, amendment to the motion by Ms. Kirkner, second by Ms. Berkeley. And then we questions on this amendment? So we're just voting on the amended, the amendment to the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The amended portion of the motion carries 6-0. Still have to vote on the actual motion, which is now amended. Sorry, it's been a while since we've had an amended motion. Okay, further discussion on this? Or are we now in a spot where everybody is comfortable? Again, there's always the weather depending variable for any of these. So okay, any further discussion? With that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. I think that was the longest part of tonight's agenda. Anything else, Mr. Manager? With that, we will need a motion to adjourn into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much, everyone. We will see you next month. Thank you, Gady.
Mr. President, we should we should announce the topics in executive session, real estate litigation, and we're not coming back, correct?
Correct. So just for to abide by the updated rules, we are adjourning into executive session to discuss real estate and personnel. Any other matters? And we will not be coming back or voting on any items from executive session. Thank you.